I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education to order tonight. And this time we'll have a moment of silence. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
At this time, we will stand to say the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming here tonight. And you're all welcome to our first meeting after school resumption. I want to say to also, we have no public comment tonight. So at this time, I want Ms. Livingston or Dr. Kobo to sit up.
How about me, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
It's my pleasure to read our vision statement.
Okay.
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for our students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should: Avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board. Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board. Avoid the misuse of public funds. Avoid misrepresentation of falsification or falsification of facts and avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome the press call who are here. Sampho Harrow, Noah. It's good to see Noah Grant, right? It's new. And we have Margaret Marchesin. And we have a representative from Fort Bragg, Ms. Salavia. Thank you all for coming tonight. And everybody else, you are very important to us. Thank you for coming to our Board of Education meeting. It's a new year. We have a lot of things that's going on. So at this time, I will welcome a motion for the approval of the agenda of 9/12/2017.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda for 9/12/2017.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved. The next on our list is the approval of the minutes of 8/8
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion that we approve the minutes. The student transfer assignment appeals on 8/8/2017, 9/6/2017, and approval of the minutes from 8/8/2017 as well.
We have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved. At this time, we have the announcement and we'll have the chairman's report. I want to say, as a Christian, we thank the Lord for a new school year. We have all of the...I remember when the school had a convocation. That room was filled with a lot of people. Dr. Bryan, thank you for organizing that convocation a few years ago. We always don't have convocation for our school system before. But Dr. Bryan started the tradition of having a convocation whereby we are all together. And I can see some excited employee of the school on that day. And thank you all for coming to that convocation. The other thing I want to say is that we have a lot of great things going on in our school system. So I just want to talk a little bit on some of the things that's been going on. I've met some of the new teachers and everything. And I think it's very appropriate to welcome everyone and to say that from the bottom of my heart, as the chair, I welcome everyone to our school. I have something I just want to read quickly to every one of us. I want to enter it into the minutes. On behalf of the Lee County Board of Education, as the chair of the Lee County Board of Education, I'm very proud to welcome all of our returning educators back for a new school year. I would also like to welcome all of our new educators to the Lee County family. We are truly a family. We are small but vibrant community that values education. We believe that knowledge is power. Writer Jimmy Polente said, "Limitations live only in our minds, but if we use our imagination or possibilities, we become limitless." We appreciate everything that you all do to ensure the most important purpose of our job, supporting the education of Lee County children. I'm proud of the direction the school system is moving in. And I have pride in the hard work of our educators, superintendent and administrators are doing. You are agents of change, educating our students in these changing times, developing their capacity for learning all that is necessary for them to be a productive citizen. Your job is really important, whether it is teaching in the classroom, driving a school bus, serving students in the cafeteria, or keeping our school clean. We are all educators. Working together, we do our best to provide the very best education possible for our children. The future of education is collaboration, not isolation. Please share your knowledge with your fellow educators. Golfer Jack Nicolo said, "Achievement is likely the product of steadily raising one's level of aspiration and expectation." I also want to thank all of our community members and parents who support our schools. It takes a total community to be successful. We are fortunate to be supported by a wonderful community. Thank you all for what you do for Lee County Schools. So, thank you very much. At this time also, I want to recognize the superintendent. But before I do that, I remember that we have something. The North Carolina School Board Association, we have a conference in in October, in November. So we want a nomination. So if you want to go, we have room for four people to go as our representatives. So just let us know about that. And also, we need a nominee for our district board of director. So at this time, I want a nomination for one position. Is that one, for the nomination to the district?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate our chair to serve in that position.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. The motion is approved. Also, I want to allow the superintendent at this time to give us the superintendent's report. I believe he's going to talk about the...
Oh, a point of personal privilege, if I may, regarding...I was looking at the agenda report. And one of the nominations on here is for the awards program.
Yes.
And I think it would be, I think, valid for us to take a look at our More Than a Diploma program as a possible nomination for the...what are they calling that? Award for Excellence in Educational Programs. Do you think that would qualify, based upon the qualifications that are listed here? I think it would qualify in the area of community schools through partnership and collaboration, perhaps?
Yeah.
And curriculum instruction. I just don't know who would write up that nomination as I turn and look at our PIO.
I was just going to suggest maybe we could talk to Ms. Spence about that.
Okay. And would the data on that be available before the October 4th deadline for submission for this year's numbers? Perfect. So I don't know if that needs a motion or anything like that. But I think it would be worth putting that nomination out there, that our More Than a Diploma program is something that we do. It's unique and it's successful. And put that forward as a recommendation.
Okay. And while we were at that, I was going to also congratulate the superintendent and all of our teachers for the report card that just came out. I know the superintendent will talk more about that before we all talk about it. At this time, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As everyone knows, our performance grades, not just for Lee County Schools but for the state, came out on Thursday. And I'm just going to review that for everyone. Just for a little bit of background on this, for performance grades, obviously, all schools get the performance grade. Eighty percent of the grades based on how well students perform on year-end standardized tests, while the remaining twenty percent is based on growth. So there's an eighty-twenty split. And growth is defined as how much academic improvements achieved during the course of the year. School performance grades include a series of scores based on statewide testing to attest assess school achievement and growth. Under current state law, a letter grade is assigned to each school based on the state mandated fifteen-point scale. For this year, all Lee County schools earned a performance grade of C or better. That's the second consecutive year for which we've done that. And that's certainly important because if a school scores below a C grade, then it's deemed a low-performing school. And this is the second consecutive year we've had no low-performing schools. We're also probably the, I believe, the only school in the region, neighboring school districts, et cetera, where we have no low-performing schools in our school district. Eight of our thirteen schools met or exceeded their expected growth. Graduation rate improved by nearly a point to ninety-one percent from eighty-nine point two. And within the schools, Lyerly College earned a grade of A. Greenwood Elementary and Southern Lee High School each improved to a B. And as I said before, all other schools received a grade of C. The schools meeting or exceeding growth were Greenwood Elementary, Lyerly College, who both exceeded growth, Broadway Elementary, Deep River Elementary, J. Glenn Edwards Elementary, Sandley Middle, Southern Lee High School, and Wesley Middle. Our ACT proficiency, which is part of the high school measure for everybody, dipped slightly from fifty-seven point seven to fifty-six point three. We thought that might go a little bit higher than that. Certainly, it put a lot of support in for that. We'd had a pretty large gain from the year before, which was about seven percent. On the positive side, work keys performance measure, we improved significantly by seven points from sixty-five point two to seventy-two point two. Our high school principals worked really hard to put some things in place to support that. And I think their hard work paid off, along with the staff. Just so everybody knows, because of their specialized missions, Bragg Street Academy, Floyd Knight, and Floyd Knight the Children's Center and Warren Williams Alternative Elementary School do not receive performance grades because of the nature of what they do. I think performance grades are certainly very important. But as Ms. Bowen stated earlier, we also put out another piece of data that we believe gives an even wider view for people to look at our school district. In the next week or so, we'll be releasing our More Than a Diploma data. And that documents, for most people, I think, in here know this, we try to document what our students earn, not only as graduates of high school, but the value add that they have for the high school diplomas. And we'll be releasing that information in the next week or so. And just to give you a little piece of that information, I think that speaks to some of the accomplishments of our students and our staff, this year's graduating class. And we basically, we base the More Than a Diploma information on the graduates each year. So this year, we'll base that on the class of 2017 that just graduated. 2017 graduates, fifty percent of the class earned at least one college credit. Now, let me say that one more time. Half of the entire class of 2017 earned at least one college credit.
Very good.
I think that goes back to not only what we've done at Lyerly College, which has done very well, but also the partnership we have with Central Carolina Works and the dual enrollment courses our traditional high school students are taking there and how well they're doing with it. So we're very, very proud of that. Also got some other information just at the end of last week. As we're, you can imagine, we're trying to gather all this information quickly to put it all together in our report. This past year, of course, when you're taking dual enrollment courses at community college, that information is for juniors and seniors. So it not only takes into account the previous graduating class, but also the students who were also juniors at that time. This past year, we had, and this is at the traditional high school. This does not include Lyerly College in this number. We had students take fourteen hundred community college courses in those classes. And what I'm even more proud of is that nearly eighty percent of those courses received either As, Bs, or Cs from students.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Nearly eighty percent of those courses, yes. Approximately about thirty-eight percent were As. So I think that not only speaks to the rigor of what students are challenging themselves to do and to push themselves, but also talks about some of our goals for our students, not just to graduate, but to graduate with something more that will help them, whether they go into more education or straight into the workforce. And just trying to give our students as much support as possible with that. As I said, in the next few weeks, we'll be, in the next week or so, we'll be releasing our More Than a Diploma information. And then we'll talk about information like certifications, credentials, advanced placement credits, IB credits, and all the different things that students earn beyond the traditional high school diploma for their success. And if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank all of our educators throughout the district in so many instances. And we talk about this at convocation and when we get into large meetings with people, teachers, teacher assistants, principals, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, staff, anybody who works within our schools is an educator. And I think we have plenty of stories where our folks all pitch in to support the education of our children. And the successes that we've had are dedicated to them and also dedicated to our very supportive community that we have, very fortunate to have businesses and individuals and nonprofits and faith-based organizations that support us and help us with so many things that we do. We're very, very lucky to have a community support and the support of so many people to help our schools be successful. And I'll close with this, Mr. Chair. We are not satisfied with where we are. We know we're not perfect. But we're going to keep working really hard and keep moving forward to make our schools the best we can.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. And just wanted to know that we are all proud of the work you're doing and your staff and the administrators for this school system. And I will be remiss if I don't say something about it. And I think I've said something in writing about it. So thank you for what you do. At this time, we want to go to the committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The curriculum and instructions for high schools will meet on September the twentieth at three-thirty at here at Lee County High School. And that ends my report. But I would like to also commend the staff, the educators, for all that they do to educate our students and for the performance report that we have received. We're receiving improvements yearly. And I think that this is something that's important for everyone to know that our, all of our improvements are very significant because it is an improvement. And so I just wanted to make that and go on record to say that we are meeting the students where they are. And by meeting students where they are, we're helping them to meet their goal to succeed and allowing them to have opportunities that they may not have had in the past. And so by doing this, we are striving for excellence. And we will meet that. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll go to the Facility and Technology Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask for a point of personal privilege before I get into the reports. I sent Dr. Bryan an email the day we received our performance grades. And I wanted to share that with the audience, particularly our staff and teachers and administrators. After reviewing our performance grades yesterday, please extend to our teachers, administrators, and staff my sincere appreciation for the efforts in helping our students learn. I take great pride in saying that I am a member of the Lee County Board of Education because of our educators and staff. I am very proud of their hard work and dedication as they lead our district's academic success. Keep up the good work. And that's for our administrators and teachers. You're the reason that we're being successful. And with that, I'll proceed with the F and T report, Mr. Chairman. The committee met on August the twenty-second. We had a busy, productive meeting. The first item that you will see on your consent agenda was from the Lee County Athletic Club Booster Club. And it was a consensus of the committee to approve the Lee County High School Athletic Booster Club Brick Fundraiser during the 2017-2018 school year. This item will be placed on the Board of Education Agenda under Consent Agenda. And just a brief explanation, Mr. Ross and Coach Peace suggested selling personalized bricks to eventually be placed in some sort of edifice on the campus to recognize the supporters of the Boosters Club. The next item was Floyd L. Knight, the Children's Center Parking Lot. It was a consensus of the committee to award the Floyd L. Knight, the Children's Center Parking Lot Paving Bid to N.C. Building Sons Incorporated in an amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. This also is on your consent agenda. And I think it will go a long ways to help solving the traffic and parking issues at Floyd Knight.
And you go ahead. You finish your talk.
No, I've got a lot more.
Okay. Go ahead.
Our focus then turned to the Greenwood Elementary School Force Main Project. Steve Janowski, who is an engineer with Rivers and Associates, updated the committee on the Greenwood Elementary School Force Main Project. Sandhills Contractors Incorporated was awarded the bid on a unit price basis not to exceed six-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-sixty-nine cents. Currently, taking into consideration some cost savings due to the unit price basis bid and several change orders, the project remains under budget. Funding for this project is FEMA. I'll say that again, is FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Association. And that was from damage that we incurred in Hurricane Matthew. And we should be able to hook up that system September the twenty-third. We had a brief discussion from the West Landing Property Owners Association. They would like to purchase some room for a sign in their community. And we tabled that being the collection of some further information. And of course, from really good news, the Lee County CTE Carpentry Project House sealed bid. It was a consensus of the committee to accept the bid of seventy-two thousand dollars from Bonnie Fashi for the Lee County Schools CTE Carpentry Project House. You'll notice that we changed from an open bid to sealed bids. And Mr. Hart assures me that it works more smoothly. So that was a very positive thing. Information on the WB Wicker School Project will be shared by the superintendent at our next meeting, September the twenty-sixth. No, twenty-eighth. Our next meeting is September the twenty-eighth, the Thursday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I was going to ask you a question, but you answered it.
Oh, good. Thank you.
At this time, I want to ask the Finance Committee report.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on August the twenty-fourth. The big item on our agenda was a bus driver's allocation pay increase. In case not everybody knows it, the state legislature saw fit to increase what we pay our school bus drivers. Per legislation, these funds shall be used to increase the average rates of pay for all school bus drivers and the local administrative unit on an equitable basis, which up to local school boards of education to determine and improve the increases to the rates of pay. Currently, our school bus drivers are paid state pay grade fifty-one. That's twelve dollars and twenty-two cents to fifteen dollars and ninety-two cents per hour per step. As a result, the committee recommends approval of the proposed rate increase of fifty cents per hour per step, which will increase our scales from twelve dollars and seventy-two cents to sixteen dollars and forty-two cents per hour per step. The rate increase would be retroactive to the beginning of the school year and only apply to PRC fifty-six, four-oh-two, and fourteen thirteen funding sources. Sandra Bowen made a motion to approve this item. And we're delighted that we're going to be able to increase the compensation for our school bus drivers. We shared the lease agreement on our mobile units. One item of interest, and I don't have it right in front of me, Mr. Chairman, but we spend over a hundred thousand dollars a year on our modular units, which is, I bring up only because of our need to continue with our plans for a new elementary school.
That's a lot of money.
And that concludes my report. Oh, by the way, our next meeting was scheduled for September twenty-first, but our finance director will be at a meeting. And since we had nothing on that agenda, I'd like to request that we postpone that September twenty-first meeting to a later date.
That's good.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I just, there was one thing about the Finance Committee meeting, and I just felt it needed to go stated, that Ms. Jones was there when we were going through this bus driver allocation. And this was something that was mandated by the legislature, as Dr. Smith said. And Ms. Jones had said that she called around to different school boards, saying, "Hey, how are you doing this?" And they said, "We don't know yet." And so once again, our finance office led the way and figured out a way to make it both fair, equitable, and done at the beginning of the school year, where other counties in our region are still trying to figure out and are going to have to retroact this pay after they figure out how to do it. So once again, I know we recognized our finance department last month for their professionalism. But this is just another case of they're doing an awesome job. And I thought it went, you know, when you're trying to do something new and you have to do it on your own and you do it so well that others look to you for guidance, I thought that just needed to go said. Thank you.
Those are things that we need to be saying about our school system that we need to read more in the paper. Also, I want to say that in an emphatic way. And thank you for what you just said. Here, I want to say something about our bus drivers. I look around, before school started, several counties were looking for bus drivers. But because of what our transportation department does, who are able to have everybody staff and this little increment on their pay, we encourage them to keep doing what they're doing. It's a great job that they are doing. Snow or sunshine or rain, they are there to pick up our children. So thank you for what you do, bus drivers and the finance department. At this time, I want to hear from Ms. Bowen for the Policy Department.
The Policy Committee met on fifteen August. And we had six policies come before us. Through the discussion, we felt that four of them are ready to move forward tonight. We tabled two pending review by Mr. Love. We had forwarded one on to Finance Committee where it was also tabled. So we had a lot of discussion, but not much coming before us tonight. We do have four policies on for first reading tonight. Those include... before us tonight. We do have four policies on for first reading tonight. Those include, and I had it here, Policy twenty-three thirty, the board meeting agenda. This is a simple change, bringing into alignment two different policies that apparently were updated at different times. One said three days, one said four days. We're just bringing them together. Policy thirty-four seventy on alternative learning programs, primarily is just a change of the language that we use to refer to our kind of parent advisory stool, what is the word? School advisory team for placement of your alternative schools. Policy forty-five forty has to do with student wellness, and Policy forty-seven hundred, student records. Most of these are simple clarifications demanded because we discovered that there was a, I guess, a bit of gray area in the policies. So, nothing major changed, but definitely need to bring them in line with current law and current practice. And our next meeting was originally scheduled for September nineteen, and there are no policies coming from the state for our review for that meeting. So, barring some unforeseen circumstances, the Policy Committee will not meet again until October seventeenth, with the possibility that we may call a meeting in the interim if something changes.
Yes, before you go, we got a email, all of us board members, from Ms., Ms. Womack-
Yes.
About the Policy twenty-one twenty, where she stated that each, in, in July, the board meeting, the board meeting agenda shall include a thorough review of this policy, and each member include all elected official or re-elected board members will sign a code of ethics statement that includes the provision of this policy. So, I want to refer this back to the Policy Committee.
Yes.
Is just to review the date. I want to say something before that. When you think of the, what she pointed out to us, the reason why it was July, when I came on this board and Dr. Smith, the election was in May. When we get elected in May, we're seated in July, and everybody signs the, the same, the same ethics code. But this time around, the-
With the change to partisan elections.
With the change to partisan election, it comes to November. And in November, December, when they were sworn in, it's supposed to be signed. So, I would just ask the Policy Committee to go for the review. It's just-
To look at the date.
And look at the date and change it from July to, to December, so that it will be appropriate for what we're, what we're doing. So, we don't have to do anything special with it and to review that.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that to us.
Well, actually, Mark, just a point of clarification. It's something we're supposed to do every year, regardless of the reelection, and we are, by law, we are supposed to sit down and go over that and discuss it. It has to also be on our agenda as a regular scheduled item. So, whatever item that is, for the last four or five years that I went backwards, it's not been on that agenda. But that is a requirement that we have from the Board of Ethics.
Yeah, what, what, what I'm just saying is, with, Ms. Bowen and your Policy Committee, you guys go back and make the changes, and then we, we correct everything, we do that appropriately.
I think that once we establish the date, as long as we get it on a board calendar on a recurring basis-
Exactly.
And do it once a year, that will pull us back in alignment with the policy. And I think that's what the goal is.
And especially-
Is to make sure that we have the discussion.
My goal is to follow the policy.
And especially when we organize. Every time we organize, we, we do that.
And I, honestly, I don't remember, Susan, you would know, did we sign all of us new ethics, okay, at the time of the election? I, I knew we did at the time of the election, but I, I think the intent of the policy is that every year, we have a review of what the requirements are, just as a refresher. It's kind of like ignorance of the law is not justification for breaking it. And so having that once a year refresher course on what this ethics is and what it means.
And I actually went back each June for the last four or five years, and it wasn't even on the agenda.
Correct.
And it's supposed to be on the agenda items. So, just trying to make it there.
I think that's a fairly easy one to come in alignment with.
Yeah, it's, it's noted, and we just-
Very important, yes.
We just fix it. So, thank you all for, for that. At this time, we want the motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
That's a motion, and it's, it's here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion is approved for the consent agenda. At this time, we'll go to the unfinished business. The review of the superintendent contract extension approval on seven eleven twenty seventeen.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I move that the Lee County Board of Education ratify, approve, and confirm its July eleventh twenty seventeen action extending the superintendent's contract until June thirtieth twenty twenty-one.
Can you do a second?
Second.
I thought we were opening for discussion. You just make a motion?
I believe at the end of the seven eleven twenty seventeen meeting, we tabled the discussion, which would mean at this time, if it's the agenda item on the table, that we take up the issue of the discussion prior to any ratification or changing up the decision.
Okay. I will just, maybe we'll hold that, hold that, and what's your, what's your question? Or what, what do you want?
Okay. At the time of the discussion, I had some displeasure, I guess would be a fair way of saying it, with the way that the contract was handled very quickly, at the tail end of a closed session, in a meeting where it had not previously existed on the agenda. And my concern was that we have a policy in place that says before any modification can happen to the contracts, that we have to have the contract, the amended proposed contract in hand for review. And my concern was that during the June meeting, as we finished up the June meeting, I had said, I'm not going to be able to make it for the July meeting. I said, I will be available to call in if I need to. The agreement was, it was a very civil, very, you know, natural conversation was, it's the summer months, it's a light agenda. I don't think that'll be necessary.
Who did you tell that?
You.
No, you never told me that.
Standing right here on this stage, yes, sir.
No, no, no. I have, I have a text message between you and me.
On the day of the meeting in July, yes, sir.
On the day of the meeting, whereby-
And I said-
Whereby I have the evidence here, whereby you asked me if there, is there anything that you are, you didn't say, you say, is there anything, you say, you didn't say, is there anything, I can read it to, to the public? Because you said it last time. I went back to refresh my mind, and there was no, nothing to say, call me. You just say you are in Atlanta, celebrating your father's-
I wasn't in Atlanta, but nonetheless, I agree.
In Georgia, celebrating-
Celebrating your daddy's one-year departure. And when you said that, you said, you said- I'm thinking about you guys tonight. That's exactly what I said. I hope all goes well. I'm thinking about the meeting tonight.
Exactly.
Thanks for your understanding.
And I said, God bless you.
And I'm perfectly fine, and I appreciate that. But what I didn't, and, and to be honest, Dr. Oakeno Show, is I feel, based upon the information, and I went back and I looked at that same text message, because that was the night of the meeting-
That's a text message.
And before the meeting happened, absolutely, I'm not going to deny I sent that, that would be silly. But what I'm saying is that if you knew at that point that something as significant as a four-year extension to the superintendent's contract was coming before this board, as the chairman, I felt that I deserved a professional courtesy of a phone call that just said, hey, Sandra, listen, we're going to do this tonight. And based upon my thoughts and reconsideration of the whole situation, and I could be wrong, and this is total my speculation, I'm not sure you knew that that was going to be brought up in closed session that night. I know from talking to the other members of this board that they had no knowledge that at the end of that closed session, that the motion was going to be made to extend the contract. And that is in direct violation of our policies.
That was not, that was, that was, that was not correct.
And if you knew, if you knew-
That was not correct.
That that was coming before our board, then as a professional courtesy, I felt like a simple text back that says, hey, FYI, we're going to amend the agenda tonight to include this item. And that didn't happen.
Let me tell you.
And so, yeah, to say my feelings were hurt, because I can tell you, from the time I brought this up in the last meeting to today, you have not called me to discuss the situation. And once again, that goes back to professional courtesy, that as a board, that the policy states that all board members have to have the opportunity to look at the contract. And that didn't happen.
Amazing.
Now, so, yeah, my feelings are hurt. I'm as equal member on this board as you are. And I said at the meeting last time, I don't care if the situation changes, but as the chair of the Policy Committee, number one, the most important job we have as a board is to set the policies for the district that we live by. And as the policy chair, I feel a great deal of responsibilities to the best of my ability to make sure policies are clear and that they're followed. And that's not just my job, it's the entire board's job to make sure that happens. That's the number one function of a board, is to set and maintain policy. And I believe, upon my reading of the policy, that it was violated. I have spoken to the School Board Association. Ms. Janine Murphy kind of talked to me, and she said, Sandra, you're not wrong. She said, what happened does not fall in line with open government. She said, but really and truly, it's not illegal. She said, that doesn't mean it was right. It doesn't mean that it doesn't stink. But the reality is, it wasn't illegal. She said, it's up to you as a board to set your policies and follow them. And so that's the only message I want to get out of this, is as a board, we got to do better, y'all. We got to do better. And so whether we take it back to a vote tonight, I really don't care. That's why I said it the last meeting. I don't want to take it back to a mo-, to a motion last meeting when two of our members were absent. Because to me, that would be returning the favor. And as a professional, and as a professional board, I think we have an obligation to set policy and follow policy. If we can suspend people for violating our school board policy, then by golly, we as a school board should be following them ourselves. And that's my statement.
And, Mark, I would like to add, as a point of personal privilege as well, I spent almost two hours with Jimmy Love. I spent three hours at the North Carolina School of Government, and also with the North Carolina School Board Association. That being said, they just reinforce the value, which I think we should all on the board go back and review the ethics policy every year. Because when you look at that, you understand that the children and the people in this community are who we answer to. When a teacher calls me, or when a parent calls me and says, you guys are not even following your own policies, but yet my kid's been expelled, and this happens and that occurs. I gave the list to Jimmy Love, and I'm sure y'all can read the same policies as well. We were in violation of at least six or seven policies. You're going to say we're not. In that case, then their interpretation is wrong. Because I know I listened to your arguments before. With that being said, we have a duty that we are supposed to present with equality, transparency, accountability to our community. When we, when we don't listen to our community, you know what we get? We get charter schools. When we don't listen to our community, you know what we get? We get lawsuits. These are the things that concern me. If people go out of their way, which I think is wonderful, that they feel like they can talk to me, but when this is said, our, when we brought this before us at a closed session, at a meeting, by policy, our own policy, it's supposed to be, the amended contract was supposed to be handed to us in a duly timely manner. When you consider a superintendent makes what, twenty, thirty thousand dollars a month, average? Because you have a salary, you have health, you have et cetera. All this stuff is public knowledge. So, when a teacher comes up, or when a parent comes up and asks a question, it's our responsibility as a board to be able to answer that. Did we discuss this? No. Did we make any type of qualifications or make any performance measures for our superintendent? The answer is no. Do we hold those teachers accountable?
Ms. Womack, Ms. Womack.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Womack, I, I let you talk, but we have to correct some, Erunos believe, we don't have a superintendent here that makes thirty thousand dollars a month.
So, can you tell us exactly how much he makes a month?
That's not-
Since you said, it's public knowledge, so tell me, sir, you know, with all due respect, can you tell me exactly? And I have the, the contract right here. The public would like to know. You know what his contract is? Health, dental, medical, and that's not even the issue. But you're saying that's not what he makes. How many charitable organizations or how many various organizations, to include the Chamber of Commerce, is he a member of? And how much do you pay? I suspect that you cannot answer that question. How much was spent in the last year for health benefits? How much have you attributed to the retirement? But none of those are the issues.
Ms. Womack, you are-
The issue is, we should have been able to go over that before we approved it.
What you are discussing right now is-
Okay, I'm done.
You are out of order. What you're discussing right now is out of the parameters of our discussion. Okay?
Our discussion is the renewal of the superintendent's contract. We should have went over it in detail.
What, 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 what she said, I was able to correct that. And if anybody goes back to see what I said during the last meeting, there is transparency on this board. Nobody's trying to do anything. And one of the violation that was there in what Ms., Ms. Bowen read on that day, he was, she was insulting one of the board members of sweet talking and all of that thing. Those are ethical violation, violation of the board. If you are insulting your board, fellow board members, we say we're not going to insult anyone. We're not going to be insulting each other. We have the, we have the documents. But that's not what we have right now. I think we need to move forward as a board, and saying that somebody's in violation, number one, when we took the action, we have, we have done the evaluation of the superintendent for, what do you call it, three months, two months earlier. We did the evaluation, what's next? The next is, is contract. His contract was in his final year, and we have to do something about it. And we, 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 what do you call it? You were saying that we didn't tell individual board members. That's, that's what you call it. That's not transparency. If we're calling everybody and say, are you going to be on? We discuss it, somebody make a motion. We have, we have the superintendent, a contract on that, on that day. You say you want it to be on the board agenda. Excuse me, every principal, we don't put, every administrator, we don't put their-
Mark, this is our superintendent. The most significant job that we have as board members-
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
Is to hire the superintendent and enforce policy.
I think we need to move forward.
Respectfully disagree.
It's under personnel. It's under personnel.
Point of, point of personal privilege, if you will, Mr. Oakeno Show.
You have had one. I don't know if somebody else wants to talk. You have one. Somebody else, anybody on the, if we don't, we need to-
Mr. Chair. There's a point of order.
Yes.
Need to go back to the original part. Come back up without all the fuffra. Please.
The original discussion of the contract, it was the agenda issues and everything. And I understand that part of your argument is that it should have just been assumed that it was in personnel. And so I did a little research of my own, going back through old minutes. And what I found was in April of twenty sixteen, November of twenty sixteen, April of twenty seventeen, and I don't have the twenty fifteen, in each of these cases were the times that we did the superintendent's evaluations, okay? We have the informal evaluation is, I'm sorry, the formal evaluation in twenty sixteen is a separate agenda item on the agenda. In fact, we had a single closed session for personnel. We came back into open session to pass it, and then we go back into closed session to discuss the evaluation.
Yes.
We did that for both formal and informal, and these are just evaluations. This is not the expenditure of a million dollars of taxpayer money. And so to say that, one word, personnel, where we hire everything from substitute bus drivers to teachers and principals, should also, we should just know that we're also going to extend a contract when we have the option of one-year extensions, two-year extensions, four-year extensions, to say that by reading one word on an agenda, that we should have miraculously known that the superintendent's contract was in there, I think is disingenuous. And I don't think anybody can sit at this table and say, when they walked into the meeting in July, that they knew from looking at the board packet that it was on the agenda. And again, I'm going to go back to what I said originally. I believe, with every ounce of my being, that the policy was indeed violated. Does that make the contract invalid? Based on what I understand, there's only one way we can go backwards on that contract. I spoke to an attorney at the School Board Association, and she said, Sandra, there's not a whole lot you can do about it because the contract was executed. It was executed the next day. Well, we can get into a discussion about that, too, because if you look at every other extension, it took some time from the time the vote happened to the time it was signed. This time, it was less than twenty-four hours later it was signed and executed. That being said, that's, that's neither here nor there. Upon the conversation with the School Boards Association, they said, the only way you can undo a contract without having negative action is if your superintendent said, you know what, I don't want any hard feelings, and I don't want anybody to feel that they got left out of a discussion, so let's undo it. And she said, who is going to do that? And I said, I kind of understand that, because it's a four-year contract, and, and I think Andy's smart enough not to let go of it. And I just, I go back to my original statement. As a board, we owe a due diligence to know ahead of time what's going to be on the agenda, to have the opportunity to research and discuss and know what we're voting on before we make a decision. Now, I will publicly, right now, apologize, because I do understand, Dr. Smith, after rereading my comments, why you felt that I was insulting. It was not an intentional slam. And I will publicly, right now, apologize to you for any hard feelings, and I don't want that to continue. This is a professional board, and I will conduct myself as professionally as I know how from henceforth and forward. I will say, however, that when we don't follow our policies, it sets us up in a position to have public embarrassment, and I don't think that that's what- And I don't think that that's what we want as a board. I think we want to do things by the book to the best of our ability. Take that for what it's worth.
We have a motion. I don't think I want to keep on arguing the same thing over and over. We didn't do anything out of extraordinary. We did everything that we did under the advice of our lawyer.
Our lawyer wasn't even here, Mark.
Can I recognize you before you talk?
Yes, sir.
A point of orders, the lawyer was not even here, Mark, and you know that. The lawyer was not here that night during that process.
Which process?
When we done had a contract. Our attorney was not here. He did not review the contract beforehand. Matter of fact, I think we should actually hear from someone that we're paying as an attorney. He was not here during that. He did not review the process, and it was not before then. So to say, to continuously keep saying, what we done was legal, what we done was correct, and that's inappropriate.
It's legal, it's correct. Let's have, we have a motion on the floor. Anybody wants to say something before we close the discussion?
I would like to say something. If our board attorney, is it appropriate to ask him to have some comments on this matter?
Well, in fact, I was at the meeting. There was a closed session in which the evaluation was discussed. And there was a motion in the closed session to increase the term of the superintendent's contract to 2021. The motion, the vote was four to two to do that. They came out into open session out here. The board then voted, and there was a quorum here. There was a majority of the board voted to extend the contract. And then the contract was, or the amendment, all the amendment did, it didn't increase, didn't change one word in the contract, except it changed it from 2018 to 2021. And I can understand there may be some concern that there was not a paper copy of that simple amendment. But it was not one item changed in that contract, except the date. The board voted on it in closed session. The board voted on it in open session. And then the board signed the amendment the next morning, or the proper people signed. The vice chairman of the board signed it, the chairman of the board signed it, and the superintendent assigned it. And of course, under the statute, the superintendent has to agree. The, the way I look at this is that apparently the main objection is notice. And a majority of the board sitting here had notice of what was going on and made the decision. And obviously, as their attorney, I can't go behind that. And my position really is this, even if the board didn't fully comply with its policy, which there's an argument on that, I don't recall any contract principle that I know of that would void this contract automatically. Because one party failed, you know, to comply with what is essentially an internal precondition to contracting. The policy, if you read the policy that we're talking about today, it could be argued, I think, that there's some ambiguity in that. Because it said, it says in there that the superintendent's contract and the provisions of his contract can be taken up or considered when the evaluation was made. I was present when the evaluation was made, and they were talking about his contract and extended it at that time. I don't think it was a surprise to anybody that the motion came to extend his contract. But I can't go behind all that. All I know is the board voted, this board voted, a majority of voted in open session to increase, to extend the contract. It's my opinion that the contract is valid as it now exists. And the only way, I guess, you could find out about that, or my opinion's correct or not, is to file a lawsuit, and I hope we don't have to do that.
Thank you for your information. With that, I call question. Thank you for your comment. With that, I call question. I have a point of information I'd like to ask Mr. Love.
When they call the question, discussion stops.
So I can't ask questions, so it makes that? I didn't know we made a motion to do that already.
On the rubber rules, question stops. Let's vote on the ratification.
Can we get the repeat of the motion, please? I'm sorry.
Can we repeat the motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education ratify, approve, and confirm its July 11th, 2017 action extending the superintendent's contract until June 30th, 2021.
We have a second?
Second.
So we vote on it all in favor? Say aye.
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 Oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion is approved by five-two. Thank you. Let's move forward from that and move to the next thing that we have on the agenda. Under the new policy, the first reading of the policy reading.
Bear with me just a moment, my computer took a nap. Ah, and now I clicked the wrong thing. Mr. Chair, I have it now. Thank you, I apologize for that. I was clicking the wrong button. Mr. Chair, I respectfully ask, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the first reading of the following policies. Policy 2330, policy 3470 slash 4305, policy 4540 slash 6140, and policy 4700. It's just those four. I apologize.
Since it's coming from the committee.
It doesn't necessarily require a second.
It doesn't require a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion is approved. We have the CIP. At this time, I will call Dr. Carol Chapel and Angela Mills.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I bring the CCIP grant application to you. We do this each year. It is a combined application this year. It has, includes Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. And Angel works with Title III and Title IV, and I work with Title I and Title II. We are, we, these are all federal grants that give supplemental monies to the school system. And then we allocate these monies out to the schools. Some of it's used in the district office, but most of it goes out to the schools. The Title I money only goes to the seven elementary schools because we have, as a district, we have determined that we want to do the early intervention with the reading. About half the districts in North Carolina serve just the elementary schools with Title I money, and about half of them serve elementary and middle school. I'll let Angel speak to Title III and Title IV.
I actually work with Title III. And as Dr. Chapel said, the money that we get for Title III is used to supplement the funding we get from the state and local government.
Excuse me, could you pull your mic up, please?
A little bit higher. Got to stop.
Or hold it.
Is that better?
Yes, great, that's good.
Or hold it, or just take it out and hold it.
I'll take it out.
Thank you.
That better?
Much better.
Thank you. As Dr. Chapel said, the money that we get for Title III helps to supplement the programs that we have in place for English learners in the county. We also get what's called significant increase money for immigrant students, when we have more immigrants coming into the county than we typically would have. This year, we're doing a couple new things, sort of, with our money, that we're hoping to receive from the federal government. So we're using it to fund a secondary EL instructional facilitator slash ESL teacher. Previously, that was a district. She was using, serving all schools, kindergarten through 12th grade. But we're finding that it's working out a lot better having her focus really intensely on the secondary schools. She's able to get in there and work with teachers more intensely, provide more one-on-one assistance, coaching, professional development. And we have a counterpart for her in the elementary school, so that's working out really nicely. And we've also added an immigrant success coach with our significant increase money. And that person is going to be very much focused on helping our new immigrant students manage being in US schools and helping them acclimate to, you know, new rules, new language, new place, and helping them get through school and hopefully graduate from our school system. So those are a couple of things that we're doing new. Some of the things that we've already done is we have hired a bilingual English learner social worker, and he is coming from the Title III funding. And that pretty much takes up all the funding that we receive from the federal government that we're applying for in the grant.
Thank you.
Are there any questions about moving the CCIP?
Dr. Chapel, I noticed you mentioned we've got someone additional in the secondary with ESL. Could you give us as a board an idea of what the needs are with the population that we have right now? What would you suggest as needs compared to what we presently have in personnel?
For, well.
For ESL.
So let me just clarify the question. You want to know what the needs are for secondary ESL?
You have, one of the, and I'll elaborate. One of the complaints that I had fielded was, one, we don't have enough guidance counselors per the number of students we have, even in the high school. But you have a number of folks coming in to the elementary schools that have definite ESL needs. And would you say that we're close to filling those needs now? Or do we, are we in desperate need of some more?
As far as ESL staffing is concerned, to support English learners in the elementary school, I think that we're pretty well-staffed to deal with elementary school. We are experiencing an increase in numbers this year because they change our testing standards. So not as many students exited this year for English proficiency as in previous years because they raised the bar and didn't tell us about it quite honestly, that that was happening. So we're experiencing an adjustment year, and we're anticipating that it's gonna get a lot better now that we know what the expectation is. But I would say for the most part, elementary school is well-staffed. We try to keep our ratio one ESL staff member to fifty students at each school.
One to fifty.
One to fifty.
Yes.
In the high school, and particularly here at Lee County High School, I feel that we could probably use another staff member because we have shifted around some resources so that we can get more coverage here. There's about 150 students here that are considered English learners at Lee County High School. And we have one teacher and an assistant and a halftime assistant that are coming by.
Four hundred fifty.
Right. So high school services, secondary services look a lot different than elementary services in elementary school. Because they're younger, we're, you know, we're helping them learn English. When they're smaller, it's a little bit easier. The structure of the school day works better for us to be able to provide services, as opposed to in high school, where we're getting lots of students that are just coming to the country as almost grownups. And it's a lot harder to master the language and navigate the school system and learn all these new things as an older person. So it's a different set of needs, and that's one of the reasons we've added our immigrant success coach, is to be able to support the guidance counselors and the social worker, our bilingual EL social worker, so that she can kind of be a liaison between homeschool and services at the school to make sure we kind of provide that envelope of support around our new immigrant students who have such a hard time getting through school sometimes here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does any of this funding affect EC?
No.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make a comment? The quality job that Angel and Carol do for our school district, overseeing this and lots of other things as well. But thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. I always appreciate what you guys are doing. The whole purpose of us being here is to make sure that we have a good, quality education for our children, and you guys are leading the way. Thank you.
May I ask a question? And this may be equally to you ladies as it is to Dr. Dietrich in the corner. The English language learners, I know often when we see school report cards, they're broken down by economically disadvantaged, limited English proficiency, etc. Just for clarification purposes, a high school student who is designated as needing services in the English language learner category are also expected to take the same ACTs, EOGs, etc. And so that population, I just asked Dr. Brian, the population here at Lee County High School is approximately 1,500 students, and you said 150 of those are designated ELL. And so, I mean, if you're talking eight percent of your population, that's statistically significant. I just, I guess, I wanted to confirm that my thoughts were right, that we're saying eight percent of our population is receiving assistance in English language learner are also showing up in our testing data.
Yes, that's true, and it's probably for the county more like 10%, 11% of the total student body.
At the secondary level or across?
Across, across, everybody, yes. And also with the Every Student Succeeds Act, the new rules are that no student is exempt. So even students that come tomorrow from another country who know no English will still have to test. They have set up how the child works in the accountability system. So the first year, they take the test, it counts for participation. Second year, it counts for growth.
Formula that nobody understands.
Yeah, and third year, it counts for proficiency, and they've got lots of numbers and mumbo jumbo to go along with that. But yeah, everybody has to test on all subjects.
I just wanted to clarify that. I thought that was right. I just want to make sure that I was.
Right. Previously, the newer students were exempt for a year.
One year.
And they've taken the exemption away.
They're counting in your percentage of participation, but not necessarily in the proficiency.
Proficiency, right. And then now also the new rule is that four years after they exit the program, they are still included in the English learner subgroup. So for accountability purposes, it's the English learners that are currently identified, plus those who are four years out.
So your fourth graders who are leaving ELL services are your eighth graders who are taking EOCs for the first time, right?
They won't be taking it for the first time.
EOGs.
They'll still be taking EOGs, but they're still calculated for four years. It used to be two, now it's four.
Okay. Sorry, I'm a number hog. Apologize.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a personal comment to Ms. Chapel this morning. Earlier today, I was at the fair, and three teachers came up to tell me what a wonderful job you were doing in assisting them in getting the grants and the funding, things that they needed for their classroom. And I told them I would pass that along. Once a fourth grade teacher, I'll try to remember later. But they obviously appreciate everything you're doing. So thank you so much.
Ladies, thank you very much. Appreciate what you do for assistance.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we, the Lee County Board of Education, approve the 2017, 2018 Lee County Conference of Continuous Improvement Plan, known as the CCIP.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion is approved. Thank you. We have number three on the agenda. Dr. Dietrich.
And I know I've said these words way too much tonight. As a point of personal privilege, I know there are a couple of new doctors in the house.
You beat me to it.
And if you have just earned your doctorate, I'd love. And if you have just earned your doctorate, and I'd love for you to stand up and take a bow.
Dr. Dawsonback, that means you.
Dr. Dawsonback and Dr. Dietrich and several of these others that are just showing what kind of leadership we have.
Dr. Shuey.
Yes, Dr. Shuey, I'm sorry. I didn't see you sitting there. Congratulations. That's just, uh, another step of doing something that you didn't have to do, but we're glad you wanted to. Congratulations on those degrees.
The, the best part is you get your life back when you get, when you finish the degree.
I understand that.
Members of the board, thank you very much for having me speak today. Uh, I come to you, if I could go back to Dr. Brian's, uh, assessment of how the schools did during the previous school year. One of the items that he mentioned was that Lee Early, excuse me, Bragg Street, Floyd Knight, and Warren Williams are given a different scale on the alternative model. And what we have to do is bring that before the board every year to make sure that they are in the proper system that they use. We have, for the last three years, chosen the alternative schools progress model, which is option C of the four options, and they are that the alternative school, uh, participates, the first option, option A, in the regular school performance grades. Option B, the data goes back to the homeschool the students come from. They participate in the alternative schools progress model, or they develop their own model that has to be developed by the state board of, that has to be approved by the state, State Board of Education. Uh, in speaking with the principals, um, they prefer option C, again, for the upcoming school year. Option C is very good. It is actually well thought out and well planned. They look at student persistence. So if the students are in a school at the end of the year, the alternative school is given credit. They look at growth and they look achievement on a three-year rolling average because they understand that one year of data will not be enough to get enough data for the model to actually be effective. So it is in an all-encompassing model, model for an alternative school that I think is a pretty fair judgment of, of what's occurring at the schools. Uh, and with that, I bring it to you that as, on behalf of the principals, that they are all given option C as part of the alternative schools model program.
Okay. Do we have any question? If we have no question, we need a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the 2017, 2018 Alternative Accountability Model option for Bragg Street Academy, Floyd L. Knight, the Children's Center, and Warren Williams Elementary, uh, Alternative School.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion is approved.
Thank you, Doc.
At this time, uh, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll use my one personal privilege of the night before I make that motion, since everybody else has. I like to, uh, say, um, it was a privilege to be at the Lee County Fair earlier and to, uh, represent the board and, uh, tell everybody the remarks I made, and Dr. Cobble and, uh, Mr. Ms. Womack can back me up on this. I said it's a privilege to, as Dr. Brown has mentioned, we work with the community. And the Lions Club and the fair is an educational event for our students. Whether they're in the barn with the cows, or they're playing the marching band as they come through, or they're selling turkey legs, or corn, or Coca-Cola products. Um, our students are there and well represented for us. So with that point, I make a move that Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, and not a public record, and in the Northern General Statute, Section 143, 318A, Way 1.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. We're in closed session.
I make a motion that we come out of closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, we need, uh, a motion, uh, for the personnel report.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the personnel report as presented in closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, I make the most important motion of the night, the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is approved.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's, the motion is approved.